Thanks Jay and Ginger, that helps. Good morning. Thank you all for being here. I hereby call this emergency special call meeting to order. Seeing no objection, we are called to order. And also, everyone remember to keep your mute on unless you're speaking. Sharon?
Okay. Got a bunch of screens up, so just a second. A resolution requesting enhanced statewide and/or regional guidance from the state of Georgia in order to promote a concerted and comprehensive approach in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I am bringing this to council today. One of the challenges we continually face is that each metropolitan area in the Atlanta area and across the state, as well as each county, are doing or not doing their own set of policies to get us through this difficult time. And as an example, so the public knows what we are dealing with as your government, every city that touches Dunwoody borders is currently acting under different guidelines. So when the questions I get as mayor often come from people who live in one city, work in another city, may have family in another county, and there is tremendous confusion. And so we are asking the governor to help us and help our fellow local government officials by developing, by passing statewide guidelines, or at a minimum regional guidelines that will help the residents of Georgia understand where we are today in this situation. So with that, I will open it up to questions or comments. And one second, Ginger and Jay, I lost Tom and John on my screen, so if y'all could help us, oh, nope, they're back, okay. So if anyone has any questions, you can just indicate, or comments, just indicate by raising your hand, and I'll call on you. All right, seeing none, I will call for the question. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Moved by John, second by Pam. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Stacy unmute, please.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The aye from the mayor, Sharon, this passes unanimously. Thank you. And Sharon, I think you're up next, too. Sharon, do you want me to read it, or will you read it? All right, hold on one second.
I apologize, Mayor, I've had some technical difficulties.
Fine, that's fine.
The third restatement and amendment of emergency ordinance with mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, under section 1.03 of the charter of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, declaring local emergency of the novel coronavirus disease, 2019 global pandemic and for other purposes.
Cecil, I think you're going to present on this, please.
Yes, Mayor. So we've put this in the same format of the previous amendments we brought forward, so we could just sort of go through it, and I think Sharon also attached the current version of the ordinance as of our last adoption in the packet. So I was asked to prepare an addition of basically the public gathering regulation for the gatherings of over 10 individuals. So to go through this, the first amendment we would do would be amend this for it to become the third restatement and amendment, which signifies we're making a third revision into the ordinance. So that would clarify that we have made that amendment. In section four, we would need to decide, at the beginning of section four, we would need to decide on the effective date for that, the preamble to section four. The actual revision, and in the version I had, I had put it as 4.6, but it should be 4.7, following the code section on other businesses. And it's a 4.7 prohibition of assemblages, events, and gatherings. And this is some standard language that has been adopted in other jurisdictions regarding this issue, and it basically states, "All public and private assemblages, events, and gatherings in excess of 10 persons shall be prohibited within city limits of Dunwoody. This includes but is limited to weddings, religious gatherings, parties, funerals, sporting events, social events, conferences, and other gatherings." Then what it does is it provides an action for critical facilities, which include critical government facilities providing essential services, schools and institutions of higher learning, grocery stores. This was something we added from the other versions that were out there, which is retail stores in excess of 15,000 square feet. That would be your Walmarts, Costco's, Home Depot's, pharmacies, hospitals, and medical offices and facilities. It goes on to state, "Nothing in this order prohibits the gathering of members of a household or a living unit." So what that would in essence do is state, you know, basically across the entire city, except for household members, that you can't have a gathering in excess of 10 people. That would be in public, et cetera. It would also extend to the other businesses. The section we had, so in conjunction with this, in the other business section, a business that could, yes.
Cecil, we're having a little bit of trouble. You're breaking in and out. If you could just make sure you're using your microphone, I'm sorry.
Okay, it said my internet is connected, so if, where did you lose me, Mayor? I'm sorry about that.
When you got, especially to the definition, the 10 or more, when you were starting about that?
When I was talking about, you heard the four point?
Yes, we're hearing.
Seven, and the discussion of what was in that? Okay. So that is the provision we talked about, with the exceptions, retail, pharmacies, grocery, schools, governmental services. Just what I was going to point out, as to businesses that remain open, unless you're one of those accepted businesses, but you're still an open business, then you'd have both the, you can't have more than 10 people in there, and to the extent they are in there, they need to stay six feet apart. So that's sort of the interplay for open businesses would have both of those regulations in play. That is pretty much it. If you adopted that, we would need to go and just decide the effective time on that provision. But that is my presentation as to the public gatherings.
Thank you. All right, does anyone have questions that you can signify by raising your hand? Okay, Joe? You have to unmute. Joe, you have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Now you have to start over, but yeah.
Cecil, yeah, with the audio breaking up, could you slowly restate the new, for what you're proposing as would be 4.7? Just, could you just repeat it one more time slowly for all of us?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I apologize. This would be the 4.7. And again, we've adopted the language some jurisdictions have been using that's out there. The language comes in and it states, "All public or private assemblages, events, and gatherings in excess of 10 persons shall be prohibited within the city limits of the city of Dunwoody." Very clear statement, then it goes on to providing examples. This includes but is not limited to weddings, religious parties, funerals, sporting events, social events, conferences, and other gatherings. Then it creates an exception for critical facilities, and those are defined as critical government facilities providing essential services, schools or institutions of higher learning, grocery stores, and then we've added in the retail stores in excess of 15,000 square feet, pharmacies, hospitals, and medical offices and facilities. The prohibition expressly does not apply to gatherings of members of a household or living unit, people that are residing together. I hope that was clear, did that come through better?
Yes, I appreciate that, Cecil. Thank you, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I just have one question, the inclusion of schools and institutes of higher learning, is that primarily because these are institutions that, as a municipality, we don't have control over, the county controls the school system, and the state controls the college? Is that the primary reason for including those in here?
You know, I think that that would come into play, but at the same time, you know, if the, if those are functioning, I think it's just that is a critical service that we're not weighing into, but it is true with the school boards, they have their independent constitutional authority. There can be some issues we need to look into if we decided to go and regulate those. I can say as a general rule, the municipalities have not been regulating school or the colleges because they have a separate, likely because they have that separate basis of authority.
Cecil, can you just confirm that the assisted living and nursing homes are also exempt? Their hospital light type facilities, and I'm not sure, I see the exception in their form, but are they accepted anywhere else?
I think that would fall under medical offices and facilities. The fact that we discussed it probably includes it in there, but if we wanted to say, at the end, comma, assisted living, certainly I think we could.
How about adding nursing, pharmacy, hospital, medical office, nursing homes, and personal care facilities? We're just clear.
I'm good with that. I guess my point is, what else are we missing? What other unintended consequences are we lopping out but not giving exceptions for? I just want to start thinking that way.
We do have two, Cecil, we do have two eating, we do have two eating disorder facilities in Dunwoody. One is more like a hospital, and one is in a home. Did those fall in, but they are, they're both, one is explicitly not a medical facility, so how do we?
Give me one second.
Lynn, as far as those facilities, I believe they have to be under a certain number of residents, and it's actually their home to a certain extent while they're there?
Right, right, that's true. One of them is clearly a hospital, it's in an office building.
Think if it meets the definition of a medical facility office, it's going to automatically be exempted under those code sections, and if it is a personal care home, I think Council Member Henigan has a good point, which is that is in itself sort of a living unit, which accepts itself in the last line.
Okay.
Household or living unit.
Any other questions? Jim?
Just a quick comment, you know, I think it's worth noting that by and large, we don't have much of any of this going on, and when we do, it's really optional activities that we really just are trying to encourage everybody to, you know, to not be in these gatherings that are potential, you know, vectors for transmission, and we're just, really trying to encourage the proper behavior, and most people are already doing it, so we're really, you know, it's, hopefully this is almost completely superfluous and will be rarely if ever enforced.
Anyone else? Sorry, I had it on mute. All right, so I have a couple thoughts. Oh, go ahead.
Well, speaking of enforceability, one reason why we're doing this is to give our police, you know, ability to do it, but what is the enforceability going to look like? What do we want them, how do we want them to enforce it? I mean, when they see a group of 15 kids playing in a yard, do we want them to break it up? You know, just kind of, how do we want them to enforce this?
Cecil, is that a question for you, or Eric, or Chief?
Eric or Chief, I defer to you, but I'd be happy to address it.
Right, let's have the Chief addressing, because he's actually the one that's going to be doing the enforcement.
So from our perspective, you know, we certainly don't want to be heavy-handed or, you know, conduct ourselves like we're in a police state, but I think, you know, going up to groups in that situation you just mentioned, Stacy, we would go up to the group and say, hey, we just want y'all to know that you're not allowed to congregate in groups like this, so y'all need to break it up. You know, very easy approach, I guess, at that point in time. And that's the tactic we would take in any groups that we would encounter, and obviously if a group refused to disperse or kept coming back together after we warned them, then we would, you know, move forward with other appropriate action.
Stacy, did that answer your question?
It did. And I guess my, another question to Chief is, some of these activities are taken, you know, in the city parks and stuff, do we have more patrols going there to make sure the playgrounds are left alone, and the ball fields, et cetera?
So we do, we're riding through fairly frequently, seeing a lot of people on the trail, but fortunately, over the last couple of days, we've not seen anybody trying to use the playground equipment or the skate park. During the initial transition, when that order first went into effect, we had some different groups, and we were having to run a few people off here and there, but since that time, we've not had any groups, at least while we've been riding through, that we've noted, and we haven't received any calls from anyone saying, hey, there's a bunch of people over here on the playground, can y'all chase them off? So I think generally speaking, we're seeing more compliance.
Anybody else have questions? I'm trying to make sure I still have everybody. Okay, Pam?
There is still some confusion out there with daycares and daycare centers. Are they, Cecil, I guess this is a question for you, are they under the state, the governor's last ordinance? There's a lot of confusion, we've been getting emails on daycares.
If Cecil doesn't want to answer it, I can answer a little bit of what I've learned. Cecil, it's up to you.
Sorry, I won't.
Okay, so daycares have to follow, under direction from Bright from the Start, which is the licensing agency, they have to follow, if they're going to remain open, they have to follow the governor's rules about 10 and under, and that means not just what's happening in the classroom, but it means if you had, if you used to have like all the three-year-olds go to playground at once, you can't do that, you still have to, even outside, you'd have to honor the numbers. And so I think Bright from the Start has taken this on, on a national level, you know, we need, there's a lot of discussion about this, but at the moment, Bright from the Start is setting the rules.
Perfect, thanks. I just wanted clarification for our citizens on that one, thanks.
Thank you. So Cecil, in the, oh, does anybody else have any questions or comments? In the amendment where it says in excess of 10 persons, I'd like it to say 10 or more people. I don't think we need groups of 10, anymore than we need groups of 11. And then, we ask the question about enforcement. Eric, after this meeting, are we going to distribute materials to the handful of retailers that are open?
Yes, we have, we have the flyer available, I know Jennifer's been, has the flyer for the police to hand out, and Chief, I think yesterday you looked at some places that were still open, some of the retailers, along with Michael Starling's list of places to visit to hand those out, and that's something that's on our list for today.
Okay.
Yes, we'll pass them out.
Right. And I think the effective order should just be tomorrow, like 24 hours from now, if that is okay with everybody on council. That way we get the notices out, and the businesses and other establishments, which there's really not anything open, can prepare for that. All right, any other questions about anything in this ordinance, suggestions, thoughts? John?
This is for Eric. Eric, I was in the park the other day, and the dog park is open, which is fine, people were spread pretty far and wide in the dog park, there's no places to sit for more than a couple people together, but I did notice the small dog area had a number of benches sort of next to each other, that was above, more than 10 people could congregate. If you could have staff take a look at that section of the park, just to make sure that they are well aware they're not supposed to be congregating in groups.
Yeah, John, and that's an excellent point, that was actually one of the items I was going to raise in the, under city manager's comments, which is for the dog park room, it signs up, again, reminding people no more than 10, more than 10 patrons at a time at those facilities. We do want to keep that open, if possible, but we can't have people gather, and that's going to be extremely important as we go into this weekend with nice weather, I'm afraid there will be more people wanting to come to the park, and we do want to stress at the beginning, where you go into the parking lot, to suggest no more than, have the sign up there as well, because people really need to stay in their car, not line up at the fence waiting for somebody to come out. We want to protect the public the best we can.
Right, the dog park is probably 10 acres, or, you know, a good five, six acres, the big dog park, so the people are spread way in the back, way in the front, it's difficult to get groups to congregate, or they shouldn't be congregating, there's a lot of space where they don't have to congregate. The small dog park is a little bit different circumstance, so I just want to make sure that you look at it from that perspective. Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Cecil, I need another amendment to the list of exceptions, I believe, is active construction sites. Are you there, Cecil?
Yeah.
So.
Yes, Mayor.
Construction is actually considered an essential business under the federal government's list, and we want to make sure that on our large construction sites, that I think we need to let the work continue so that there's not a disruption where avoidable, I don't know how council feels about that, but we have several projects that are close to completion, and the companies are taking precautions, but I think we probably need to allow that to continue at this point, given specifically that construction is considered an essential industry on the federal government's list of essential industry. So if there's any discussion about that or questions, I'll take that. So Cecil, can you include that, please?
So Mayor, if we choose to add that, I think a good place might be right after we exempt the retail stores, 15,000 square, we could, do we want to say commercial construction sites, or all construction sites? We could put, do we want to say commercial construction sites or all construction sites?
How about all all construction sites?
Mayor, if I may add something as well?
Yes.
Okay, and speaking to Richard McLeod about the construction portion of it, you know, of course, we have a variety of construction sites. You have huge sites like the State Farm zone and which is, and how that's set up, as well as, you know, small sites could be a residential site, could be something like our park. So each one is slightly different. So I don't know. Cecil, how can we work through the sites like State Farm versus some of the other? And Mayor, does that, does that make sense for what you?
Yeah, I just think you have to say construction sites, right? Oh, John has a thought.
Well, I guess my thought is we're trying to regulate over 10 employees or 10 people together. On a small home that's under construction, I'm told you never have more than really four or five people in the house doing work at any one time. The rooms are only so big and there's only so many people that can work together. So again, under 10, I think even small, single-family homes under construction typically don't have a whole lot more than, or, you know, close to 10.
Right, I just, is not, Cecil, is it not possible just to say exceptions applied to construction projects and critical facilities as may be determined by the city, but explicitly include? Could we insert it there?
Yeah, yeah, I think based on the conversation, I would be relatively comfortable with just saying construction sites and not really putting the discretion into us to decide. If, you know, I think Councilmember Henigan's statement is good, which it may be that a small, single-family residence doesn't fall under this criteria anyhow. But clearly, a State Farm is going to, and if we say construction sites, we're probably, we've given them the ability to go forward. If we stated commercial, it would mean anybody that was so we can just say
Hey Cecil, we totally lost you at point.
And Mayor, I think I heard a little bit about what he was saying as well. But he was just saying all construction sites, and I agree with that. You're spot on.
I don't disagree where are we putting it. That's what I was trying to
Right, what part? Bill, are you on the line? Where would we add that to the ordinance?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, sort of.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think if we add it right after 15,000 square feet, comma, construction sites, comma pharmacies.
No, but, but we don't want to, no, because we don't care what size the construction site is. So it shouldn't be by 15,000 square feet, I don't think. Oh, I see, retail stores in excess of 15,000 square feet. Okay, gotcha, that's fine. There's a comma. Commas matter. Okay, is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, so the amendments we made, Cecil, do you want to go over them? Do you want me to? Okay.
Mayor, I'm good to go through it if y'all can hear me.
Okay, yes, try and then we'll see.
All right, so the amendments would be number one, third restatement amendment. Number two is it would be effective, become effective Friday, March 27th, and I have it at noon, basically. And then we would add in section 4.7, and it would state all public or private assemblages and gatherings in excess, no, not in excess, all events and gatherings of 10 persons or more prohibited within the city limits of the city of Dunwoody. This includes, but is not limited to weddings, religious gatherings, parties, funerals, sporting events, social events, conferences, and other gatherings. Exceptions apply to critical facilities as may be determined by the city, but explicitly include critical government facilities providing essential services, schools or institutions of higher learning, grocery stores, retail stores in excess of 15,000 square feet, construction sites, pharmacies, hospitals, and medical offices, nursing homes, and facilities. Nothing in this order prohibits the gathering of a household, gathering of members of a household or living in it.
Does that cover it for everybody? Any other, Pam?
Were we going to, or is that coming after this, the 4.0 now would be 4.8, Cecil?
That's up to you. You can bring it up.
Yes. Yes.
You want to talk about it?
Oh, sure, I can. Yes, Cecil put in some language that this morning on adding, I guess it would be now 4.8 on garage sales. It seems silly that we would have to name this, but apparently it's happening. And as people are home and cleaning out their houses and closets, they're having garage sales.
So I have, I had provided, Councilmember challenged some language, and basically it would put in a new section, 4.8 garage sales, and say, due to the nature of events and the potential close proximity of participants and the unregulated nature of garage sales, the same being in contravention to the public health, safety, and welfare due to the nature of the emergency, garage sales shall be prohibited until this emergency declaration is terminated.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Jim?
Are we really wanting to shut down every garage sale? I thought the issue was people were having estate sales with literally, you know, hundreds or more people showing up and, you know, that actually is an issue. You know, garden variety, yard sale, you know, if the stuff's out in the driveway and, you know, you're sort of spread out and it's not a mob scene, I don't see an issue there.
Right, so how do we define that? Because just for the public's information, last weekend in a Dunwoody neighborhood, there was an estate sale company that put on an estate sale and offered gloves to the first 300 customers. So that's exactly, that's, Jim has defined it. How do we define that in the ordinance, Jim? Do you have any thoughts?
Haven't had much time to think about it, but obviously, you know, you know, I think you see my, you see my issue with, you know, blanket prohibition, and I think until we can clean up the language, I'm not for this. I think that somehow address this.
Yeah, what I've seen typically for, well, I haven't seen it this week or last week, but typically in my neighborhood, when someone puts out a garage sale sign and it opens at eight, people drive in from all over the place with cars and they wait out in the street for eight o'clock. And it really, it's not an estate sale, but garage sales can, garage estate, it can be named either way, but they can get busy. And I was just concerned with the people cleaning out their homes that this could occur. But if we want to defer it for another time and just wait and see, I'm fine with that, too.
And we can use it in our messaging to the public that it's a really bad idea.
Good idea. We could, yes, that's a good idea. Just message that, that, you know, think.
Yeah, it's also covered under our 10 people or more, so that's what I was going to say.
Yeah. Okay, we will move on without that if that's okay.
Yes.
So we are back to the amended resolution. I'm sorry, I'm having a tiny bit of technical problems. The amended resolution, and I think, is there any more questions about where we are, comments? Go ahead, Joe.
I'm having an issue just with version control of what electronic copy I'm reading right now. I know this is in flux. So I'd like to, just to clarify, the existing 4.6 is not being modified, correct? We are retaining 4.6, 4.6A is still remaining, correct?
Cecil?
Yes, yes, the other businesses provision in our previous adoption is not affected. And Joe, I know that in the version I had the 4.6, the 10-person exclusion will be 4.7.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, anything else? All right, I will need a motion, please, to, for the passage of the third restatement and amendment of the emergency ordinance.
Move to approve with the effective date of tomorrow at midnight?
Second?
Second.
All right, move by John, second by Pam, all in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Was there a, other amendments to be made, Lynn? I thought there was something else to be amended.
I thought your motion was, was your motion as amend, as what we last left off? Now Pam brought up the garage sale, but we decided not to move on that. So Sharon, are we doing this correctly?
You are, Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Signify by raising your hand. If you signify A by raising your hand, all in favor. Sharon, it passes unanimously. Thank you all. To my agenda. Anybody have discussion items? Seeing none, see manager comments, please, Eric.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The government operations continue. We are going to lock the baseball fields and the tennis courts just because we're having too many people gather on those facilities. We're going to place signs up at the dog park with no more than 10 people. And we're also going to, per Councilman Henigan's suggestion, is move the benches apart in the smaller dog parks, people can't be as close. All other park activities are canceled, but the passive portions of the parks remain open. City Hall is closed until April 13th. We are operating a limited staff at City Hall right now. But as far as the citizenry should not see a difference in how we operate, with the exception of the courts and a few other departments. Most everything we can do, we're doing online or doing from our remote offices. But the, what I want to do before I continue the report, because I know the police chief has to, has somewhere he needs to go. I would like to hear, have him do a report within my report, and then we'll go back and I'll finish the rest of the department report, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Fine, that's fine.
So what I thought I would do today is kind of take you guys through a little bit of kind of what we're doing and what we're seeing. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions when I get through. But all of our officers have been issued PPE equipment, and we're working with DEMA to get additional equipment in, particularly the N95 mask and gloves. They all have eye protection as well. We've ordered that and received it. So we've looked at some of our responses to decide, especially once City Hall closed and we started seeing this becoming more of an issue. And so just to, I've tried to jot a few notes down, but I may get kind of out of order with some of this. But so first, we looked at how court was operating and our failure to appear warrants that are our warrants for people who failed to appear in our court and our probation violation warrants. So failure to appear warrants have a, they have a bond. Probation violation has no bond. So right now, we're not conducting any of our, any of our hearings. So we have some statutory requirements once somebody's arrested to have those hearings. And so we're still arresting people for failure to appear warrants and giving them an opportunity for a couple of days to bond out. If they don't bond out, then we're releasing them on a copy per the solicitor and our judges. So they're, we're letting them out of jail. On the probation violation, if we come in contact with them, we're going to get their information about where they are, but we're not arresting them. We're releasing them to possibly arrest them at a later, later point in time. Some of our misdemeanor calls, particularly shoplifting, we're not arresting those. They're being released on a copy of citation. So they're being put in the system. They're just not being physically arrested. We have halted, except for serious traffic violations, all of our traffic enforcement. So we did, I think a few days ago, got some people going over 90 on the interstate and then somebody in a residential area about 20 miles over the speed limit and running a stop sign. So we stopped, we're stopping people like that, but not, we're not routinely conducting traffic enforcement so that we can limit contact between our officers and members of the public. When City Hall closed, you know, we're continuing as much as we can normal operations. Some of our administrative staff is working at home. We also have some of our staff that's sworn officers, a few that's on standby in case we have an exposure, which I'll get into in just a little bit, and how we put that to use recently. I did have some of our numbers pulled for the week of March the 7th through the 13th, which is kind of right before all this happened, and then the week, March 14th through the 20th. So our crime is about 3% down, so not significantly. And our dispatch calls are down about 9%. And our overall calls, which includes self-initiated activity, is down about
You saw my text last night?
I muted, I mean, muted everybody, I'm sorry, mute.
It's all right, is down about 15%. A lot of that is attributed, the down number of calls is attributed to the lack of the traffic enforcement, which is a lot of self-generated activity. As I mentioned a minute ago, initially, after some of our emergency declarations happen, we saw kind of limited compliance at some of our parks, playground equipment, skateboard, skate park. And, but over the last couple of days, we've seen more compliance, more people, you know, following the rules. We're not having to chase people off as much as we were. We've been conducting bike patrols periodically, trying to do those every day. Obviously, it's rained quite a bit at different days, so we're certainly not getting out in that weather. But I think we have, I think, two officers out today on bikes. Visibility is extremely important during a situation like this. You know, we need to be there, visible, available for people. To that end, we've taken some of our spare cars and moved them around at important visibility points in the city so that citizens can see the police car there and also the bad guys can see a police car as well. We've had a few instances of potential exposure. We had an alarm call, officers went on, and the woman answered the door in a mask and said she was COVID-19 positive. They didn't have any direct contact with her, maintained the distances and everything. But when we checked further, we found out that, no, she was just in self-quarantine, that she had possibly been exposed to somebody, so she didn't have it for sure. We had another case with an elder resident at Dunwoody Pines, but we didn't get directly involved. We had another case with an elder resident at Dunwoody Pines, but we didn't get directly involved, the fire department handled that. Also, a 36-year-old male collapsed, and he was having some symptoms. Again, the fire department was the one except for last night, at the Notting Hill Apartments, we had an incident where we were called as backup for the fire and AMR, they were having a combative patient, the officers got there and helped get the patient under control, and then found out that the wife had called because he had a fever, coughing, and she thought he might have COVID-19, but he didn't wanna call an ambulance or go to the hospital, and so they decaf fire transported him, we decontaminated everybody, sent him home, and they're gonna be in self-isolation until we can get the, hopefully, the test results back from that patient. Within the next couple of days, the fire department has our number and is assured us they're gonna call us as soon as they find out something, and it appears that person will probably get tested, but, you know, it's kind of uncertain in some cases, but I think that one probably will. And that's pretty much my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Questions, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Joe.
Chief, just, I really appreciate that detail, that's great to let the citizens know what we're up to, really, just, just appreciate that. Just a fine point, that, that last gentleman that you mentioned, was he taken, you know, in normal circumstances, if a person doesn't wanna go to the doctor, an emergency, that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, couldn't, couldn't force them to, correct? I mean, how did that play out, and what's the state law, what's, what's the laws on that today? I know it's a fluid situation.
So, I don't know that we could take anyone that, against their will, that doesn't wanna go, I think in this case, he finally willingly went, went, went to the doctor.
Great, okay, thank you very much again, thanks, and nice to see everybody out, and by the way, I was out there at the skate park, nobody was out there yesterday, and I appreciate the, the ball fields, you know, that was a tough one, too, I saw folks out there yesterday having a good time, but, you know, it's like, a little bit close mixing around and doing some football practice and things like that, so, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Chief, is there anything you need from us? Is there anything you need, your officers need, the department needs, from council?
Mayor, I appreciate you asking that, and I appreciate the concern that you have, and as well as the rest of the council for our staff, I've conveyed that to them, and we certainly appreciate it. Right now, we've got the resources we need, we just got a shipment of hand sanitizer in, which is always, you know, certainly helpful to have around, and we put in our order, I talked to Chief Cox at DEMA, and we've got our request in for additional masks and gloves, and so they expect a shipment at any moment, and, and he's assured me we're gonna get some of that shipment, so I think everything's good. We are taking some, you know, obviously, one of the biggest concerns officers have is if they get exposed, and then taking that exposure home to their family, and they don't wanna do that. So, what, what we're gonna do in, in this situation is, if they, if they can't separate from, if they have no place for their family to go, we're gonna pay for a hotel room for them to be able to stay in, so that they can separate for a period of time, until we find out whether, you know, they had a positive exposure or not.
Chief, thank you very much for that, especially the last thing you said, it's important that we take care of our officers and their families, and so I'm thrilled that we have a plan to make sure that they can continue working once they're cleared, but also, if anyone is potentially exposed, they don't have to take it home to their family.
Well, thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna mention one other thing, and so, in this situation, obviously, this has taken three officers off a shift, so we have some officers, some of our administrative officers, working in community outreach, that are gonna be filling in on that shift, and that's one reason why we have some officers in standby, is so that they can fill in if we have these potential exposures, so they can fill in for those positions, so we're not ended, ended up in a short, short position for staffing.
That sounds like a great plan, and we also have mutual aid relationships, should things go really badly, correct?
We do, we, we certainly have agreements with many of the agencies around us, including Brookhaven, Sandy Springs, and Shambly as well, and, you know, but, of course, you know, they're operating similar to us, so I'm sure they've had some issues as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
And Eric, you can resume your report, and you can start with, we have, we're protecting people's leave, right, in this situation, is that correct?
Yes, we're still, we're still working through some of the federal regulations on, on the leave, but yes, we're, we're gonna protect the employees, and, and find the best method to do that. The, you know, and as the chief stated, and that's one reason I really wanted him to speak to y'all directly, was because, you know, they are on the front lines, and, and that's, they have the biggest exposure. You know, a lot of the other folks in the office have kept the luxury of working from home, but, but those guys have to be out there, but the communications couldn't be better between, between my office and the police department, as well as the other, as well as the other departments, as, as well as people like Chief Cox with DeKalb County, he, he keeps up with us very often during this crisis. But, just one other thing that I wanted to go through briefly, was just a report on the other departments, and I'll send this report to you, I just wanna hit the highlights, and it's primarily for the public, so they can, they can hear some stuff. One thing all the departments are looking at still is, are the, is their budget, you know, this year, as Jay explained the other day, and as we went through with Linda, is, you know, I'm not overly concerned with the budget right now, with this, this year, we are making cuts, we're gonna look at different projects, we do have the, our reserve, but as time goes on, depending on how long this episode lasts, what the economy does afterwards, and, and how, we'll have to look into the budget more deeply as we go into 2021. The, so all the departments are looking at ways to find budget cuts within their, within the area. The Communications Department, you know, they're, they continue to be a, you know, our main source for getting information out to the public outside of, outside of these meetings, and with our COVID-19 website, we're trying to keep everything up to date on that. The, the City Clerk's Office, you know, they continue to, to keep us functional for our meetings, open record requests still come in, we're processing all of those online, also holding telephone conferences when needed on those. The Building Department, just, these are just some kind of, I'm gonna call them fund stats in a way, which is the building inspections, completed 29 building inspections yesterday, one plan review, code enforcement is still working, working on apartment sweeps, we also issued five notice, warning notices, completed five more re-inspections. Engineering's still working on some drainage issues that they have in that area, and easements on people's properties, and I'll send you a more comprehensive list on that, which can be posted, we posted in Sharon's minutes as well. Erosion control plans, people are still submitting plans, we reviewed, had one new review come in, eight inspections were done. We also have the permit technicians processing four re-submittals, nine new submittals, answering phone calls, responding to emails, so all that stuff continues to operate. And let's see, the Planning Department are using this opportunity to go through some more administrative portions of our code, and see where we can make improvements when we reemerge, but also have occupational tax zoning, zoning letter approvals are coming through that office as well. For, because people are still interested in, you know, finding out what they need to do for a business. Public Works, here again, that's gonna be one of the larger departments for our budget, so they're digging pretty deep into those different categories that we have. Tuesdays, activities were closed due to the rain, as far as going out to infield activities, so those guys had an opportunity to catch up on any paperwork, but we're all still coordinating on our other projects, the Tilling Mill Sidewalk, working with utility relocations, as well as the Spalding, Shambly, Dunwoody, and Winter's Chapel Path projects are working on, still meeting with, talking with GDOT on the projects that we have with them, I think there's a, we should have a phone call or conference with them later today. And so, the Public Works portion continues to operate pretty smoothly, from the standpoint of our inspections and our contractors in the field. Parks and Recreation, I gave a brief synopsis of that at the beginning. I, I do want to just advise, you know, the public, just to monitor, you know, when they go out to the parks, the passive portions of the parks, to keep smaller groups and not to congregate, that's the most important element we have there. The Human Resources continues to work as well on, on keeping up with the, with the leave issues and the new federal requirements, and it's one thing you mentioned earlier in your statement, Mayor, was, you know, how are we protecting our employees? Nicole and Heather are working closely on those items to make sure we're in 100% compliance with everything, and, and so, we gotta make sure that, that's an ever-changing environment right now, so once all those rules are finalized, she's keeping up with those very well. The, Michael Starling went out the other day and did look at our businesses and to see how many of them are, are closed, the parking decks around the perimeter mall area are pretty, are pretty empty, you know, 80 to 90% reduction is what we're saying in the workforce right now, traffic's minimal. Also, we have, Michael's also following closely the, the new pa, the passage of the stimulus bill to kinda digest that for us, and to bring that into a, to a form where we can easily have some bullet points to digest for our own benefit, as well as putting it on our website, so the public can know, just kind of a digested version of that. Final note will be the court system, which is, the deputy clerk, clerks continue to scan and attach citations, and we're preparing, preparing the docket for when we do reemerge, no matter when that date is, the docket will be ready to go, and we wanted that to start whenever we reemerge and open City Hall back up, that will start a week later, just so everybody knows. But calls are being made, being made to folks, to let them know about their appear, they're not, they're not gonna have a failure to appear, of course, while we're not in session, and so, but there's a lot of compliance being made by people just paying their citations online, so that's helpful. I'm glad to answer any questions, and I will send the council on a detailed report, as well to share, as well as to Sharon for the minutes.
Thank you, I'll take questions in one second, I wanna clarify something you said, it was just the way you said it, that might confuse people, you said there was an 80 to 90% reduction in workforce, which sounds like 80 to 90% of the jobs have gone. What you probably meant to say is that 80 to 90% of the workforce appears to not be working at their offices, correct?
You are, you are correct, thank you, thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for Eric? Okay, thank you. Council comments, I'll start with John. No, okay. John, no, okay. Tom?
No, thanks, I'm good.
Okay. Joe?
I was told to welcome, there's some Boy Scouts watching us virtually, Troop 266 from Dunwoody United Methodist Church, so I just wanna say, welcome, and go get your badge for civic engagement, thank you.
Jim?
I'd just like to give a, a quick thumbs up to everybody involved in printing and shipping the "Everything will be okay" signs around town, that's raising money for the artists at the school center, and, you know, in particular, Hayward Westcott, who's been involved in printing and distributing those, and my counterpart Stacy, who has also been involved in distribution, so that's it.
Thank you. Pam?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of our citizens here in Dunwoody, just driving around, looking at different neighborhoods, and good job, good job, Dunwoody, thank you.
Amy? Nothing?
I'm good, thanks, Lynn.
Me, so, Joe, can you put up that picture? So, yesterday, I asked, I was asking early in the morning, our top staff about what was happening in Dunwoody, because quite frankly, like many of you, I have been staying home, and very, as I leave home, it's been very close to home, and I was really, it's been a few days since I had been out, and so, Chief Grogan did a ride-along for me, and we went all across town, and, Joe, that is not the right picture. The picture of the intersection, Joe. What I wanted to show you, what I was trying to show you, is a picture that Michael Smith, our Public Works Director, took off the monitoring system we have at lunchtime yesterday around Perimeter Mall, and it's near Hammond and Ashford Dunwoody, and there were no cars on the road. For the most part, all retail, that is not what, there you go, that's the picture. So, you can see for yourself, this wasn't one in the morning, or, or, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning, this was yesterday around noon, our residents are doing fantastic. I speak to mayors regularly, and county officials regularly from across the region, and we are having so much fewer problems than other municipalities, and I am grateful. But, I want to reiterate the message that came out in the city email yesterday, if you don't, it's not essential for you to go somewhere, please stay home. The, and, and this also relates to gatherings of children and teens, the number 10 matters, but it's truthfully, you know, it's probably better if everybody just associates with who they're staying home with. You know, I am a big believer that the more we practice staying at home, the faster we get through this, and, and I'm hoping that the governor will hear our appeal, that we will send to him today for regional guidelines. The amount of confusion it's creating for residents and businesses alike makes an already stressful situation so much more stressful, that the rules are varying so much across the region. I want to thank our police department and our staff for, and council for persevering and, you know, managing this really difficult situation, and, and our citizenry, again, I cannot stress enough how grateful I am, when I go to Kroger one day last week, and everybody was voluntarily lining up outside, waiting for the store to open six feet apart, and seeing that means that we're taking it seriously, and I am grateful. To all the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and AP Government and ninth grade civic students, if you need to work with a government official, an elected official, this might be a good time to reach out, because a lot of us are staying home, you can Google us and find our email addresses, and maybe even our phone numbers, and send us an email, and we can help you either with your badges, or perhaps an extra credit opportunity. So, with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Jim, second by?
Second.
By Stacy. All, all, any discussion? All in favor? By raising your hand. It passed unanimously, Sharon, thank you all, and everybody stay safe and healthy.